The meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the village of Wilmet. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the village of Wilmet. We’ll call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door. So you may want to have a copy so you can follow on to see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask you, please, come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask you, please, speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you, because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. From those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available both in hard copy form at Village Hall as well as on our website at wilmet.com. Also, our village board meetings are televised in local access Channel 6 and on the Internet, and if you look up, you can actually see the cameras in the corners of the room. The red light indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the village board, see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and the policies we create. You can also find archived videos of village board and other local government meetings at wilmet.com. I’d like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmet who tune in regularly to Channel 6 and pay attention to the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials. These agenda materials are also posted on wilmet.com on the Friday before our meeting so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week’s packet contained 313 pages. We’ve had an opportunity to review all the information in the agenda packet, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask you to tell us the most relevant, most material, the most important points that you’d actually like us to focus on. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices. And while we’re turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. So we’re all here. We obviously have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. I’m going to defer Item 2, Public Comment, to the end of the meeting tonight. It pertains only to matters which are not on the agenda. Next item is Item 3, the Consent Agenda. So as described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items beginning with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda, and tonight, starting on Page 1 with Item 3.1, all the items on Page 2, and the first item on Page 3, which is Item 3.16, items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight. And if an item is not removed by a member of the audience and not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I’ll begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? May I see a show of hands? Moving on, are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Show moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it’s been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries, the Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved. And I’ll clarify for people who are here tonight, again, all the items beginning with the number 3 have been approved, and that includes land use committee items 3, 4, and 3, 5, as well as Judiciary Committee Item 3.16. So if that was one of your items, or if that was your item, it’s been approved. There will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda, so you are free to leave, but of course, more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. So I don’t see anybody leaving, so I won’t make my comment about stopping by a restaurant on their way home. Next up is Item 4, Report of Officers. We’ll start with a report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
Report, Mr. Mayor.
The next item is Item 5, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There’s no report tonight, so we’ll move on to our standing committee reports. First up, as always, is the Land Use Committee, Trustee Pierce.
Everything was covered on Consent Agenda.
Okay, we’ll move on to the Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
We have three items this evening. The first item is Item 6.21, which is Adoption of Ordinance 2018-085, Repealing the Village Ordinances Concerning Cook County Minimum Wage and Paid Sick Leave Ordinances.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it’s been moved and seconded. I’m going to begin consideration of this item by making some introductory remarks. My comments will borrow heavily from my memo to the board dated November 8th, which was included in the board packet. And in substance, that memo said the following: “I am recommending that the Village Board of Trustees adopt ordinance number 2018-0-85 pursuant to my authority under Chapter 2, Section 2-2.5.4 of the Village Code. I directed the Corporation Counsel and the village manager to place this ordinance on the village board’s agenda for introduction on November 13th, 2018, and for discussion and adoption on November 27th, 2018,” which is tonight. This ordinance will result in the village opting in to the Cook County ordinances regarding minimum wage and mandatory paid sick leave. It will repeal the village’s ordinances that opted out of the county’s paid sick leave requirements, that’s Ordinance 2017-0-40, and conditionally opted into the county’s minimum wage requirements, ordinances 2017-0-36 and 2018-0-45. On November 6th, 2018, Wilmet residents overwhelmingly approved two county-wide referenda relating to the county’s minimum wage and mandatory paid sick leave ordinances. In an election with strong voter turnout, Wilmet voters approved the minimum wage referendum by a margin of 76% to 24%, and approved the paid sick leave referendum by a margin of 80% to 20%. I will note that if you look at the precinct level data, that every precinct supported both questions by at least a margin of 65% to 35%. In 2017, when the village board joined more than 100 other suburban Cook County municipalities in opting out of Cook County’s 2016 minimum wage and paid sick leave ordinances before they took effect, Cook County had not studied or solicited information on the potential impact of their ordinances on suburban communities. Moreover, two referenda relied upon, for the Cook County ordinances dated back to 2014 and 2016, called for statewide action in the case of minimum wage differed in substance. When the village board acted to preserve the status quo by opting out of the Cook County ordinances in 2017, the board also committed to a comprehensive review of the subject. The board appointed a working group of highly qualified individuals to conduct a thorough and thoughtful review of the county’s ordinances and how they might affect Wilmet. After receiving this report, the village board modified its position in June 2018 to opt in to the Cook County minimum wage requirements effective October 1st, 2018, subject to certain conditions continuing. Thanks to the extensive public discussion of this subject in Wilmet during 2017 and 2018, and the comprehensive report of the working group, Wilmet residents are better informed and engaged on this issue than anywhere else in Cook County. And November 6th referenda correctly and accurately reflected the county’s ordinances and were both approved overwhelmingly by Wilmet voters. Therefore, I believe the village board should implement the results of the referenda and fully opt in to both county ordinances. I believe that this should be done promptly, mindful of the need to provide notice to our business community. I believe that the village’s thorough and thoughtful review of this subject for the past two years obviates the need for additional examination, and that we should implement the results of the November referenda expeditiously. So those are my opening comments, setting the stage for this discussion. Prior to opening the floor to public comment, I am going to request an amendment to the ordinance. In a letter to the village board, the Chamber of Commerce expressed concern regarding the proposed January 1st effective date for the paid sick leave portion of the ordinance. Obviously, the minimum wage portion is already applicable. For many businesses, the holiday season is their peak season at a very hectic time of year. The Chamber requested an effective date of June 30, 2019. A number of the members of the village board have also expressed concerns to me regarding the effective date, and I believe these are reasonable concerns, and as such, I’m proposing an amendment to the motion which would allow for 90 days’ notice to the business community. It’s right now almost December 1st, so March 1st, 2019, is my proposed effective date for the paid sick leave portion of the ordinance. Again, as I mentioned, an effective date is not relevant to the minimum wage portion of this ordinance, since the county minimum wage already applies within the village. So from a procedural point of view, if the amendment is acceptable to the movement and to the second, the motion on the table will be amended to include the effective date of March 1st for the paid sick leave portion of the ordinance. Trustee Sullivan, is that okay?
Show moved.
Trustee Pierce?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion on the table has now been amended to have a March 1st effective date for the sick leave portion of the ordinance. So we’ll now move on to public comment. We have a pretty full house, not as full as in past, but I’m going to follow the same practice that I followed at each of the meetings that we’ve had on this topic. Before beginning public comment, I will allow people to register their support for or opposition to opting in to the county’s ordinance without having to take the time to address the board. I will ask people to raise their hands to show their support or opposition. We will count each group and include it in the record. Of course, participation in this exercise is optional. This process is intended to make the meeting move more efficiently by allowing people to express their opinion in a simple way without taking time to address the board. It also addresses two other issues. There may be people who may not be comfortable addressing the board from the podium. There may also be people who are content with just registering their opinion in this way without taking the time to address the board. So this process accommodates both those groups of people. So listen carefully, please, because we’re now using the term “opt-in.” So if you’d like to express your support for the village opting in to both of the county’s ordinances, that is, having them both take effect in the village, please raise your hand now. Yep. So we had three counts of 17, so... And also, if you’d like to express your opposition to the village opting into the county’s ordinance, that is, you would like them to not take effect in the village, please raise your hand now.
Five?
Okay. So five, we’ll note that in the record as well. Now, may I see a show of hands from those who would like to address the board this evening? Okay. Let me remind everyone of the village’s rules for public comment during a board meeting. In order to give every person a fair and equal opportunity to address the board, each person will be allowed of three minutes to speech, to speak, and individuals will be allowed to address the board only once tonight. Mr. Frenzer will be responsible for watching the time for each speaker. He’ll let you know when you have 1 minute left and 30 seconds left. He will also let speakers know when their time is up. And finally, we ask that all speakers be considerate of each other this evening. Please be respectful of each other’s opinions. Refrain from commenting unless it is your turn at the podium. Also, for the people here in attendance, please refrain from applauding, booing, or otherwise making comments or noise. Address your comments, please, to the board and not to others in the room. So there’s only eight of you. I would just ask you to line up at the podium, and public comment is now open. Welcome, thank you for joining us again.
Good evening. Thank you. I’m Reverend C.J. Hawking. I’m the Executive Director of Arise Chicago, which was one of the groups that was responsible for getting paid sick days passed at the county level in October of 2016. I’m here tonight to thank you all for your consideration, to thank the voters who spoke loudly on the ballots, and to thank the people of Wilmet who, for the past year and a half, have been advocating for this. We now know that the lives of many people will be changed for the better, and that public safety and health conditions in our restaurants are going to improve significantly as well. I thank you for your consideration, and this is just the beginning. You are the first suburb to opt back in post-election, and Glenview is going to be opening the discussion on Tuesday of next week, so congratulations for being at the forefront of this as well. Thank you again.
Thank you. Actually, let’s go row by row, so we’ll just start, first row on this side. Nobody raised their hand on that side, so anybody else in the first row? This is your chance. Okay, second row?
Lucky Gorman, a 10-year resident of Wilmet. I want to verbally add my support to opting in. It’s hard enough to run a business without having the best of the retail workers drained off by other suburbs.
Thank you, sir.
I’m the Executive Director of the Wilmet Kennerworth Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you for amending the proposed ordinance for the extension of the implementation of the paid sick leave. That will help a lot. We also just wanted to propose that, instead of the new ordinance, that you keep Section 2D and Section 2E of Ordinance 2018-0-45 intact. This would allow Wilmet to observe the hourly wage in the Cook County ordinance while preserving the business protections that were there. It would also allow the village of Wilmet to defer to state-of-Illinois legislation, even if Cook County refuses to defer to new state minimum wage law. And it would also allow the village of Wilmet to protect businesses from the CPI increases embedded in the Cook County ordinance, which may not be included in state minimum wage law. And again, thank you for extending this paid sick leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Row 4? Oh, I’m sorry, yes, we’re still on Row 2, and I don’t count very well. I went from 2 to 4. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Beth Feely. I’m a resident of Wilmet. When elected officials at any level of government exceed their authority, it undermines the public’s trust in all government, and this troubles me greatly. These are President Blinsky’s words from June 26th of this past summer. So I’m wondering, what was it in the November 6th ballot that changed the status of the Cook County Board’s legal authority in this matter? Because I would like to understand that. The Cook County Board put the mandate questions on the ballot because they didn’t get their way the first time around. 80% of municipalities opted out. Rather than respecting the decisions of municipalities, the Cook County Board couldn’t leave it alone, and I read today that Glenview is now reconsidering as well. Indeed, Commissioner Suffordon’s vision of a blue bubble of progressive government in policy is spreading. Also, from the video of the June 26th meeting, I’m wondering what changed about the details that President Blinsky described about the survival of small retailers in Wilmet. Here are a few quotes. “Small-town retail businesses have never felt so much pressure. Empty storefronts make Wilmet a less attractive place. It is not our shopkeepers who are wealthy.” And these are just a few of the comments that begin at the 5-hour-and-40-minute mark of that evening, and I encourage people to revisit those. I’m also wondering, since when do you rule by plebiscite? And I’m wondering, how many of those who voted for the mandates on November 6th own and operate a business in Wilmet who will bear the consequences of this decision tonight? And this brings me to my last point. I think it’s hypocritical to impose these mandates on Wilmet businesses without the village adhering to them as well. And let me be clear, I prefer that you opt out of both entirely, both for the Wilmet village businesses as well as for how you run the village. I’m sure you keep your labor and HR policies fair. But if you’re imposing these rules on businesses, I think perhaps you should pay a CPI-indexed minimum wage to all employees, paid sick time to teenagers who work a couple weeks a summer for you part-time over the summer, and see what that does to your labor costs. And then maybe you’ll know what you’re asking businesses to endure. It indeed undermines the public’s trust when the elected officials at any level exceed their legal authority, and it also undermines the public trust when elected officials give in to Cook County’s overreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay, I’ll mention it to people. Somebody just said they can’t hear in the back, so you do have to lean into these microphones quite a bit, so, okay?
Good evening. A statement from neutral neighbors, Betsy Hart, Wilmet. In June, Board President Blinsky himself was adamant the Cook County didn’t have the authority to apply the mandates in the first place, and that the wage and sick leave mandates would hurt small businesses in the village. He voted against both. Now he’s completely reversing course and asking the board to follow him and push through a final vote and approval on all of the Cook County mandates with no conditions or reservations for Wilmet, barring a slight delay in one of the sick leave ordinances. It appears, from earlier statements, that the fix is in. So why the sudden change? The ostensible reason is that an advisory referenda on the November ballot showed support for the opt-in. But wait a minute. Advocates of the opt-in have always made the case, and the board seems always to believe that Wilmet residents generally supported the measures. And really, do you believe for a moment that if the voters were actually being asked to stroke the checks for the increased wages or pay the fees that it’s going to cost businesses to track the sick leave for 16-year-old part-time workers, that they would have voted the same way? Of course not. They were voting away other people’s money. That’s easy. If an advisory referenda is all it takes to reverse course after a year of careful deliberations, hours of community input, and hundreds of people attending village board meetings to discuss these issues, questions arise. Just what was the point of all that effort? What has changed about the facts, not the feelings, that caused the board to vote for a limited version of the county’s mandates in June? Why do we need the board to make decisions at all? Why not just hold regular plebiscites on issues? If majority rules and can literally vote away the rights of others to run their small and family businesses as they know best how to do, what can’t the citizens of Wilmet decide by majority vote? And if opting in to the Cook County mandates is now a good idea because the voters feel it is, then how does the village board justify not applying the mandates to local government enterprises and their employees? If majority rules, shouldn’t it rule the village government too? The board might say, “Well, the county ordinances don’t require that, but they also don’t require you to opt in.” So the village board, by not applying the mandates to its own government, is saying it’s okay if teens working at the rec center come to work sick? Remember, lots of young children are in and out of the rec center all the time. Aren’t they being put at risk? It’s okay if young adults working part-time are exploited when they choose to work for less, even dollars less an hour than the $13 minimum wage that hits in 2020 or $20 an hour after that? The answer, of course, is that the village board likely knows that paid sick leave for all, including even part-time 16-year-olds, will do nothing to stem the spread of illness. They know that young, working adults, part-time, or second earners in households, which almost all minimum wage workers are, are not exploited by choosing to work for the prevailing market wage. They also know that to enforce these mandates on village government would be incredibly expensive to the customers of Wilmet government, meaning higher taxes or significant cuts back in service or both. And yet, in a move reminiscent of Animal Farm, the board is willing to impose on businesses they have no stake in what they will not impose because of its devastating impact on the very government they administer. If this passes tonight, you should be ashamed.
Thank you. So anybody else in Row 2? That’s everybody in Row 2. Row 3?
Good evening. Mark Wiremiller. I’m on Lawndale Street. I’ve got my clock going, because it’s a little distracting when you say 1 minute, 2 minutes, so I’ll just try to watch my time here. I actually didn’t know this was on the agenda. I usually just come and talk about property taxes, and this all ties together for me, because soon, it appears we’re going to have no businesses left in Wilmet, because who would open a business here when you could open one somewhere else and pay your employees less? I’m concerned about that. I noticed you said if people are leaving, they should go to the restaurants and stuff in Wilmet, but soon, there probably won’t be any restaurants. We’ve lost Treasure Island, we lost Carson’s. If you drive down Green Bay Road, there’s plenty of empty businesses. I just don’t see who would open a business in Wilmet. So this ties in with the minimum wage and just other things. I’m just going to throw out a couple other things. I just wish the village would sit back and just not do very much of anything, like... So they bought that property down the block where they tore down the printing place. The village wants to, like, micromanage private property. I’m concerned about that. It was a total fiasco, the village getting involved in the Ford property, which was the largest taxpayer, sales taxpayer in Wilmet like 20 years ago. The village got involved, it sat empty, it got off the tax rolls. I’m concerned about the pensions. I wish the village would spend some time talking about the pensions. Perhaps they could, on municipal employees, start IRAs, 401Ks, and we could be the village... We could be the guys who are... Minute 35, in case you’re keeping track. We could be the guys who would set the tone for the rest of the 43,000 elected officials. Keep in mind, you guys are a group of 43,000 elected officials. Could you guys be the ones to take the lead on pension reform? On these things, then we’d have more money to pay out our employees. Lastly, I just, I see you guys are talking about bike lanes. I mean, bike lanes, how do we survive in Wilmet without bike lanes all these years? I just wish we could focus more on this. As you know, I’m in the real estate business, I’m worried about property values. I see property values going down in Wilmet because of everything you guys are doing. So I’m just asking you guys to sit back and maybe do less stuff and think about the homeowners, or property tax, or residents, and the businesses. So how can we cut spending and cut taxes so people, like, regular people like us, could keep more of our own money? So that’s what I’m thinking about. Thanks for letting me speak. 2 minutes and 34 seconds, so, thank you.
Thank you. Row 3, yep?
My name is Gina Kennedy. I’m a 30-year...
Yeah, you’re definitely going to have to speak up and into the microphone. That’s better, for sure.
Is that better? Okay. My name is Gina Kennedy. I’m a 30-year resident-plus of Wilmet, and here we are again, hopefully for the last time. I’m sure most of us feel that way.
I’m sure that people can’t hear you in the back.
Still can’t hear me, okay, I’m sorry. The results of this month’s election, which include referenda and support for the ordinances regarding minimum wage and paid sick leave, confirmed the results of the professional survey conducted in April. A substantial majority of the residents in Wilmet support the unconditional adoption of both measures, although I do believe that Mr. Blinsky’s amendment to the sick leave ordinance is probably prudent. Moreover, I believe that the exceptionally thorough, thoughtful, and unbiased report prepared by the working group headed by Mr. Jacoby should lay to rest fears of some in the community that adoption of these ordinances would seriously harm businesses and perhaps even the workers that they seek to help. The single study, a work in progress from the University of Washington, which fueled these fears, was substantially revised last month and is now in line with the vast majority of studies on this subject, concluding that increases in the minimum wage do not lead to job losses or meaningful decreases in hours for low-wage workers. There is therefore no compelling reason left for not opting in, and I strongly urge the board to do so tonight. I recognize that this issue has stirred up very strong feelings, even some animosity on both sides, and I’m sorry to see this. I hope, however, that after tonight, we all set aside these feelings. We, the residents of Wilmet, need strong, vibrant businesses. They provide the goods and services that we depend on and the restaurants and entertainment that we enjoy. They are, in what turn, a mere collection of homes into a livable community for all, and we should, when possible, support them. But our businesses need us as well, we, the residents. In order to thrive, they need to attract patrons, customers, patients, clients. None of us are under any obligation to patronize a particular business. We are free to decide not to do so for any reason or no reason. When we choose to patronize a business, it is because they offer services and goods that suit our needs, they treat patrons fairly, they respect their customers, and they respect the community’s shared values. Belittling the views of one’s patrons can be self-destructive. So let’s all, please, please, put aside our differences of opinion after tonight and pull together on the one thing that we can all agree on, that a strong, vibrant, and varied business community is absolutely critical to our town, and that this is best achieved through mutual respect, civil dialogue, and goodwill on all sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Row 3? Welcome.
Good evening. I’m John Marshall. I live at 822 Prairie in Wilmet. I think you all know by now that I strongly support opting in for both ordinances. It really came home to me recently when I had a close family member who needed to have surgery. It was outpatient surgery, so nothing too severe, but I really needed to be with that member of the family while they had their surgery. I’m fortunate enough to have a job where I can take sick leave, and I was able to spend the day with the family member without fear of losing my job as a result. Unfortunately, that currently is not the case for many workers. If you do pass this sick leave law, this will provide perfection for them, whether it’s a family member having surgery, whether they need to get a cancer screening themselves, whether they have a sick child with the flu at home, whether they have the flu themselves. It will contribute, obviously, to the health of that family and to the health of the whole community. Finally, I hope you do adopt the ordinance as amended by President Blinsky. Do not take out the CPI index for workers. If it’s not adjusted for inflation, a few years from now, we may end up in a similar situation where the cost of living has continued to go up, wages for our lowest-paid workers have remained the same, they would continue to...
I guess when the majority votes for something, that's what rules, but I think we need amendments to both of these ordinances because the majority forcing other people to pay the difference between the actual wage and the prescribed wage and the actual policy and the sick leave policy is not proper. The people who voted for this referendum did not vote to pay for it themselves. When people vote for a new sewer system or improved roads or whatever, all of the citizens pay for what the majority agreed to do. So that I think you need to set up some kind of mechanism where the village pays the difference between the wage, which is a fair wage, which is a wage everybody who is working for it accepts, and your minimum wage, and that this be taken out of the taxes of every village resident. To the best of my knowledge, anybody who's working a job in Willmet makes a decision every day, as I did when I was employed by others, or as I do when I'm employed myself, to continue going to work. Sometimes you can quit on the spot. Sometimes you need two weeks' notice. I'm aware of situations where three weeks, three months' notice is required. But in any case, everybody, whether they're thinking or not, is accepting the pay level. They're accepting the sick pay or days off that the job has. And an employer, if he is playing below market, when that person leaves, will either be unable to fill that, at that position, or someone else will come along and take it. So that you are forcing employers to pay more than the job is worth, and you're forcing the employer to do that rather than the people who voted 80% for it or all of them. In case you do not have it in your budget to set up some type of mechanism to do this and to administer it and keep track of it, and obviously make sure people don't lower the wages so you'd be paying more of it, I would suggest that what the village needs to finance this project, rather than putting it on the back of employers-
You have half a minute.
-is a village-wide income tax. I don't know if it would be the same level as the Illinois tax or what level it would be, but 2%, 3%, 4% income tax on everyone in the village would make clear what people have voted for and what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please. Anyone else in row four? Row five? Welcome.
Good evening. My name's John Hazer. I'm a 40-year-plus resident of Willmet, also a business owner in Willmet. And I was also on the working group of Willmet. And I was thinking, as I was driving over here, man, last year, I don't know, we went to seven, eight-plus meetings, hours at a time, reviewing all the stuff that was presented to the board in, in June. So the question to me is what changed between now and last June, other than the election? Obviously, there are a lot of people in Willmet that feel that it'd be good for the businesses to have their pockets picked, so to speak, and it's a concern, though, because this is a couple of things that came, I was made aware of when I was reviewing all the information that was presented to us as on the working board. Specifically with regards to the, not the minimum wage, but the insurance and medical insurance, medical leave, is the headaches for small businesses will be greatly increased. To increase minimum wage is one thing. It's, it's not that difficult from an accounting and booking, bookkeeping standpoint to amend those things, but to keep track of the hours put in and there's, if you look at the, the actual referendum that's being proposed, is that it will require a lot more work on behalf of the employer to make sure that this is abided by. So this is how I'm going to paint the picture that I see in Willmet, and I've grown up here. I'm going to see more stores that are going to be shuttered. Small, this is going to affect the small businesses. It's not going to affect Jol, it won't affect Walgreens, but it probably will affect Chalet. It will affect Latin Lassie. It will affect Chantilly Lace. It's going to affect a lot of those small companies. They're not going to hire as many people as they would, and they are also probably not going to have the service that you would hope to get, regardless of the fact the community's going to get behind it. But your dollars to donuts, a lot of those people that voted to have this amendment or the referendum opted in, do not own businesses and do not know what's involved in it. I would strongly, strongly encourage you not to opt into this portion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in, one, two, three, four? Row five? Row six, back row? None of the ramblers want to speak? Okay. So nobody raised their hand on that side, but I'm going to be fair, and I'm going to start, I'll start in the back. Last row, second to last, third to last? Reporters, good? Okay. All right. So public comment is concluded. It's only 8:08, so I'm not going to suggest that we take a break. We'll just keep going here. Okay. So as outlined in my memo, an affirmative vote tonight on ordinance 2018-0-85 will have the effect of the village fully opting into both of the county's ordinances. So at this point, I want to open it up to the trustees to ask any questions of Mr. Stein. We've been, you know, this is not our first go-around at this. We've asked a lot of questions of him, but at this point in time, I just want to make sure if you've got any questions about the law, the ordinance, our process, anything else. Mr. Stein is available as our corporation counsel now to answer questions. Trustee Pierce.
Through one of the comments that was made, you know, a situation could arise six months from now if we opted in where the state changes the minimum wage. And what, what does that mean if we opt in? That's my question.
So if we opt in, we're, the village is subject to the county's ordinances and the county's enforcement of it. The county ordinance for minimum wage states that the minimum wage shall be, year by year, either the minimum wage listed in that, which is, goes up to $15 and then the CPI, or the greater of the state-
$13.
Well, $13, I'm sorry, $13. Not $15. $13 and then to the CPI, or the greater of the state act or any federal act. So if the state acts and makes it to $14 or $15 above this, then that would essentially control. It wouldn't necessarily take away the rights out of this ordinance. It wouldn't nullify it without other action. So if someone's paid $12, they would have a right to sue under this ordinance or sue under the state act or have a state agency or a county agency enforce it. There's no provision like that in the sick leave. Now, if the state does act also, it is possible that the state will put in there a home rule preemption. If the state puts in a home rule preemption, the county ordinance by law would be nullified, and the state act would then essentially control.
Trustee Dodd?
I just had a follow-up question on that. I just, and so, did you say if the state were to implement paid sick leave, is there any, what hap, if the state were to implement a paid sick leave, what, what's the provisions in the Cook County?
So the paid sick leave is silent, the Cook County ordinance on paid sick leave is silent as to being automatically nullified or anything. However, if the state does say you get 41 hours, right? It would not be a concurrent 81 hours. It would still, the state would still control. And if someone would, again, were to be given only $39 in violation of the ordinance, they could choose which avenue to enforce, whether that be the county ordinance or the state act. How it behooves them to go out to the state act because they would give more, in this situation, they'd be giving more. Now, if the state act, if the state act also does have that home rule preemption, the county sick leave ordinance would be nullified.
Any other questions for Mr. Stein? So I'm going to ask the question that was asked. Given the mechanics of this, our authority is to opt in or opt out. We've had this debate. We've had this discussion. We can't change it to make it the way we want it to be. It's all or nothing. We added, in our earlier discussion, we added conditions, but we didn't change who it applies to, how much it is, or anything like that. That's still the case, that we don't have that authority.
That's absolutely correct. Nothing has changed as far as that, as far as my opinion concerning that the home rule municipality does not have the authority to enact a sick leave or minimum wage. In this situation, our, our sunsetting provisions in the ordinance opting back into minimum wage are perfectly lawful. We could do it again here. You can opt in today and opt out tomorrow, but it is a choosing of whether or not we're in the county ordinance or not in the county ordinance. It's not whether Willmet has its own standards.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Stein? Okay. Is there anything else we'd like to talk about before we go move on to discussion? Trustee Kersman?
So, Mr. President, what went into the June 30 date as opposed to April 1? Is there, can you walk me through sort of the process? And if the chamber needs to answer this, that's, that's fine, but what necessitates six months that couldn't be accomplished in, say, three months?
Well, that's what I propose, three months. I propose March 1st, three months.
Okay. Thank you. I'm reading from the text. I apologize.
Okay. Yeah, no, that, it was January 1st in the ordinance, and I proposed, and it was amended to March 1st, not to, not to June 30th.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. The chamber did ask for June 30th, but I thought 90 days would work. All right. Anything else? Okay. So it's, it's been moved and seconded and amended. We've moved on to discussion. Let me make a couple introductory comments here. So this issue's been in front of the village board, as everybody knows, multiple occasions over the past couple of years. And each of the members of the board has previously commented at length on this topic in multiple meetings in the past. And the only thing, the only thing that's changed since our last consideration of this issue is the November 6th election. And in my introductory comments, I sort of laid out the rationale for the board's reconsideration of the issue following the election. So, you know, I could certainly understand if there are those who think that sort of what's, what needs to be said has been said on this matter. Now that said, you know, of course, any of the individual trustees that would like to express their views again tonight are welcome to do so. So that's what I'll ask now. Are there any, any of the trustees, would you like to add to the comments that you previously made tonight? Is there any discussion? Okay. No discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments.
Okay. Trustee Kersman. Floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for everyone, to everyone for coming out this evening and for your ongoing opinions as we have worked through this process. I think tonight's action is both necessary and overdue. We are now in the second holiday season since the minimum wage ordinance first came to the board, and I pause to reflect about the several thousand of dollars that these workers could have earned for their families and spent in our local economy if we had acted sooner. I also contemplate the six and a half sick days a worker could have accrued by now. Not that they would use them all. As we know from the research, people tend to not use all of their sick leave. But it's worth thinking about how many sick children were forced to attend school, spreading illness to other kids, to their teachers. How many tainted meals were served in the village of Willmet by sick workers? But those concerns aside, it appears that we're getting close to making it, getting it done. If so, I do want to congratulate my colleagues for keeping an open mind to public opinion and to the information provided by the work group. When I reflect back on our process, I have just one reservation, and that is we invited minimum wage workers to participate every step of the way, and they did not. I think we had only the best of intentions with this outreach, but it didn't work. We didn't get much engagement from the people who had most benefit from these ordinances. And I think there are probably very many legitimate reasons why they did not participate. I just lament not being able to hear their points of view. I don't pass judgment about their absence, but I did, it did lead me to a deeper thought that I don't want any resident to feel disempowered, unrepresented, or alienated from the village of Willmet. I think we're blessed that in the village of Willmet, we have the ability to reach and care for all of our residents. When it comes to minimum wage workers or low-wage workers, the work group came to find that we have more than 1,300 low-wage workers that comprise about 20% of our workforce. And so I want to direct my comments to this group directly. And my message is simple. You have a friend at Village Hall. I've thought about you. I've cared about you, and I have fought for you. I believe all working people, regardless of their income level, should feel welcome in the village of Willmet, and their contributions to our community should be appreciated. And that's why I think this is both necessary and overdue. I'm going to use the next part of the meeting to process the amendments that are being proposed and to try to come to terms with them. But like I've been clear from the start, you know, that's not necessarily how I'd want it, but I look forward to the discussion and trying to deal with these amendments in a thoughtful manner.
Thank you, Trustee Kersman. Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard? Okay. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-85 as amended.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Belinski?
Aye. Motion carries. Ordnance has been adopted. Back to Trustee Sullivan.
Our next item is item 6.22, which is a public hearing on the village of Willmet's fiscal year 2019 budget.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there any member of the audience who would like to be heard on the matter of the village of Willmet's fiscal year 2019 budget? May I see a show of hands? All right. Seeing none, I now declare the public hearing closed.
Next item is item 6.23, which is adoption of ordinance 2018-081, adopting the fiscal year 2019 annual budget.
So is there a motion?
So, a motion to adopt.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. As we all know, the staff has been working on the budget for a number of months now. There have been several discussions of the budget in public meetings, but I will turn it over to Mr. Bremen, I think, Mr. Frenzer, for a brief presentation on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. And since we've had a number of meetings on this, I will try to be brief. First, I would like to thank the village's budget team, Mr. Bremen, John Praesner, Melinda Malloy, our finance director, and all the department heads who worked with us to try and put the 2019 budget together in the best manner that we could, and of course, the village board. Our discussion of this tonight is actually the cumul, cumulative, or the culmination of process that began last summer when we met with our financial review and update with our capital improvement plan and capital discussions with the board, and then finally, after presentation of the initial budget, our committee, the whole meeting. The 2019 budget, the board should be congratulated. It has a reflection of good governance and solid financial planning. It provides, we have maintained our AAA bond rating. We are consistently meeting our actuarially required pension contributions. We have continued to maintain reduced staffing levels while still maintaining core services- our capital improvement plan and capital discussions with the board, and then finally, after presentation of the initial budget, our committee, the whole meeting. The 2019 budget, the board should be congratulated. It has a reflection of good governance and solid financial planning. It provides, we have maintained our AAA bond rating, we are consistently meeting our actuarially required pension contributions, we have continued to maintain reduced staffing levels while still maintaining core services to the residents. We have balanced budgets, we are fortifying our reserves, we're using a capital equipment replacement fund to ensure timely replacement of critical equipment and emergency vehicles without impacting the tax levy, and we are limiting and avoiding tax and fee increases. Our sewer fee has not increased since 2015, the water rate has not increased for five of the last seven years, and our permits, vehicle licenses, ambulance fees have been held flat for five years. The three major funds that we have, first the general fund, the budget is again balanced and has the lowest percentage increase in the property tax levy in the past 22 years. We enhance our investment in our infrastructure, including transportation, and previously identified engineering goals with $4.5 million allocated, including for a road program, failed alleys, renovation of a brick street, maintenance, enhanced funding for sidewalks, curbs, brick street, maintenance, pavement markings, crack sealing. At long last, we will complete the Glenview North Road, Glenview Road, North Bridge sidewalk, and we will allocate $30,000 for traffic calming for the first time since the Great Recession. The property tax levy, as I said, is 2 and 3/4 percent. We actually have a modest reduction in debt service. Our operation costs will only go up by 1.68 percent, and pensions by 1.2. In the water fund, once again, we have a water fund that is both self-supporting and reduces our reliance on property taxes with $1 million transferred to the general fund, net revenue that we generate by our wholesale water sales to other municipalities. The budget includes $5 million for continuation of important water plant electrical improvements and for water main replacements along Locust Road and Lake Avenue, and includes a modest 2.7 percent adjustment to reflect increasing costs for operation and to account for a portion of debt associated with these projects. In the sewer fund, this is the fourth consecutive year with no increase in the sewer rate. The budget includes substantial capital investment, again, nearly $2 million for sewer lining and for phase one engineering of our neighborhood storage improvements, as well as substantial investments in sewer main repairs. Stormwater utility implementation is also funded if necessary, and we will try out a rain-ready program. We've appropriated money to get that off the ground and see what the resident interest level might be, and in addition, $60,000 for smoke testing. Our next steps, the fee schedule, increasing the water rate, was adopted this evening with the consent agenda. The tax levy ordinance was also introduced on the consent agenda that will be up for adoption on December 11th, as it must be filed before the end of December. And the paint classification plans will also be approved on December 11th. So that is a quick summary of where we are at, at the end of the budget process. Again, we thank the village board for its diligent work with us to help put this together, and we believe it meets the village board's goals and the community's needs, and encourage you to consider its adoption now.
Again, we've been in multiple meetings and had opportunities to ask questions, but are there any final questions for the budget team? Ms. Malloy's here, Ms. Berger's here, obviously the manager's office is represented as well. Is there any further questions? Mr. Mass, I've not, you know, not ignoring you're here too, and Mr. Praesner in the back. Are there any further questions for the budget team or the staff at this point in time?
Okay, I'm going to move on to discussion. It's been moved and seconded, and I'll just start. You know, first, want to thank the staff for its efforts. For those of you who don't know, I mean, it takes months to put this together. All the department heads are involved, the budget team, the manager's office, you know, particularly want to, you know, mention Ms. Berger, who, you know, with all of the capital needs that we have, has to figure out what's going to get paid for this year and what's going to have to wait another year, and that can be a difficult job for her. I'd also like to thank my colleagues for the time that you all put into this process. It is a big budget, it's a detailed budget, and it does take a lot of time to get up to speed on what's going on. And I think the trustees, once again, did a good job preparing for the meetings that we had. So, you know, just quickly, look, this is a fiscally responsible budget. It maintains service levels, and as Mr. Frenzer highlighted, it includes significant investments in our municipal infrastructure. $4.5 million for roads, sidewalks, curbs, and alleys, over $4 million for sewer lining and rehabilitation, as well as the initial engineering designs for the stormwater improvement program, and $5.4 million for critical water plant improvements, and another $1.008 for water main replacements. So with all that investment, our property tax increase for 2019 is 2.75 percent, which is the smallest percentage increase in 22 years. And that's really a testament to the village staff. The staff just continues to manage our operations well, be as efficient as they can, and look for places to save money when they can. So I believe that the 2019 budget is a very good budget, and I would open the floor to my colleagues for any comments that they would like to make. Trusty Sullivan, you're finance committee chair.
Well, you said it so well, so I don't want to, but I think I would echo, I think, you know, the staff did a terrific job, once again, very well educated. It was a good process, I think it's a good reflection of the state of our community that you have done since coming out of the recession, to say this is the lowest increase that we've seen, which we should do, but I also think there was a good discussion on, we still have a lot of work ahead of us to address, you know, the makeup of losing a major tax contrib, major tax contributors that have been staples in our community for a number of years are gone, so we have to replace that. We have, you know, the pension discussion to talk about, which is coming up, as well as some exciting capital projects, which we had one to talk about with the sewers coming up and a new police station. So we have a little bit of work to do, but this was a good, good reflection of the efforts of where the community's positioned today.
Thank you, Trusty Sullivan. Trusty Wolf?
I also wanted to thank the staff. You've made a complex project, process, much less complex with all your, your preparation, all the information you gave us, all the meetings, it, I think it went very smoothly. I personally am especially pleased to see some of the stormwater projects really starting to take shape. And the rain-ready project I'm really interested in, we're going to be working with the Center for Neighborhood Technology, which is a 501(c)(3) specializing in that sort of thing. So the plan is to work with them for rain-ready Wilmet, which I'm really looking forward to, and hopefully there'll be good participation. And as Trusty Sullivan mentioned, plans for the, for the stormwater project are moving ahead too, and that's, that's a big project we've been working on, as well as all the water plant projects and water mains. There's just a lot going on, and this budget, I think, addresses it very well.
Thank you, Trusty Wolf. Trusty Plunkett? I'm on the left side.
Exactly. No, I just wanted to thank staff again too, and all of the trustees, we come from varied professional backgrounds, but I think each of us is so impressed by how well Wilmet is managed by the fantastic staff. And I think that, you know, when we're introduced here and when we, when we learn about it, it's really so well-run, and you hear stories about other municipalities that are having to make serious cuts, and there are firefighters and police, and, you know, we've managed to keep the core services being efficient as possible and still lowering the tax burden. So, or at least keeping it as small as we can. So I, I'm really impressed by how well-run the village is, and it's in great part to the staff that hopefully we will keep here for a long time.
Thank you, Trusty Plunkett. Right side, anybody? Trusty Dodd?
I'd just like to thank everybody who's here in the room in terms of coming, because many of you have continued to provide some feedback to us on the budget process throughout the year. I'd reiterate what the Trusty Wolf, and Trusty Sullivan, and Trusty Plunkett said about the staff. I know this is only my second year going through the budget process, so I know you've all spent a lot of time with me, and I'm hoping next year it'll be a little bit smoother. I just want to make sure too, to thank the finance committee, which is led by Trusty Sullivan, and also Trusty Plunkett and Trusty Pierce, that you have a big job, and you've also really helped us get to this place for having a really good budget, so thank you. I know that's had many meetings in front of you and things like that, and so I think, you know, you have a, you do have a difficult job in front of you. I would reiterate what Trusty Plunkett said, which is just, we should be so proud as residents for how hard that all the staff works on behalf of all of us, and how their goal each year is to continue to improve the lives of every resident in Wilmet. And we're lucky, and many municipalities don't have that. And I tell people, and I said this at the last budget meeting, but I say this anytime when anybody asks me how I like my somewhat new role, and I always say, I feel really lucky, and I wish all residents in the community knew how great our staff was. So thank you to each and every one of you. Trusty Sullivan, I just would like to say, as you look ahead to 2019, I said this in our committee, the whole meeting, but I'll reiterate this, that I think it is really important that we look at our reserve policy. That is something that's important to me. I've, I do believe it's grown significantly, and so I think it's important that we manage that with all the capital projects that we have in front of us. So the second thing I'd say is also, I would ask us as a board or the finance committee to look at developing some sort of policy around how we budget non-recurring revenues. I know I mentioned that, non-recurring permit fees, excuse me. I know I mentioned that again in our committee of the whole meeting, but I do think that that's important. I recognize, I don't know all the intricacies, but I do think it's an important part of our budget, and I would like us to just think about if we could have some sort of policy in place to help us with that. And that just goes in line with, I feel really proud of this budget. We do have somewhat of a conservative approach to budgeting. It's something that I, I appreciate, but I do also believe there's a balance, and so, which is why I would ask the finance committee to look at the reserve policy. But otherwise, thank you, everybody, for all your time, and we should be really proud.
Trusty Kersman, Trusty Pierce?
Yeah, please.
Go ahead, Trusty Kersman.
Yeah, thank you. My colleagues have said it very well, including just what Trusty Dodd just shared, I think that's worthy of consideration, and I'm, I'm open to looking at that with you in the future. You know, it's a push and pull thing, because on one hand, our conservative budgeting has put us in a great place. I think the budget contemplates both near-term, medium-term, and long-term needs of the village, and, you know, it's doing well in that regard. And, you know, you never know when you show up with a list of questions, whether they're good or not, but staff is unfailingly patient in fielding all of, all of my concerns, and as it has been pointed out, a lot of time gets spent on, and a lot of brain space gets spent on, you know, trying to understand the budget when you're new serving on the board. It has definitely gotten easier, this year was easier than last year. I don't know if that was true for you, but I certainly found that to be the case, and it does give you appreciation for what, what the staff does, to be able to put out a good product each and every year. And so I wish some of the folks who have left tonight already heard, heard the message that, you know, conservative budgeting policies are in effect in the village of Wilmet, and so I hope they're, they're watching at home. But thank you to staff for, for everything that you do.
I will tell you, I think Trusty Wolf will agree that after eight years, it gets easier, Trusty Wolf, right?
Gets easier every year.
Trusty Pierce?
So I echo the things that have been said so far. It is really kind of fun to read the statement, the lowest percentage increase in the tax levy in 22 years. I mean, that's, I don't expect that to continue, but it's really wonderful that that's what this budget is. I also commend staff in that I came in mid-year, and the budget process, it's, it's very understandable for someone who's just, I mean, I had done it before, but, you know, that was all out of my head quickly, and, and it, it, even for citizens who are not part of the process but are interested in it, this is something that I think people can appreciate and understand easily, which is, which is great. I think the fact that we received this AAA rating, which a lot of towns are no longer receiving, one of the factors is the fact of our fantastic staff and the way the village is run, and I'm sure that's looked at, and we, we benefit from it as well as the citizens will when we issue our bonds. And also, just the services that is, not, not so much the bu, it kind of factors into the budget process, but we now have this fantastic place where I can throw my old TV out at the village yard, that we, that all kinds of other people are doing as well. And, and we, we'll have composting services available, and it's strictly because someone at staff, you know, twisted the arm of the vendor and said, well, sure, we'll go along, but we need another benefit for the village, and, and we're, we're very fortunate to receive those benefits. So it's, it's a great budget, and I'm happy to be a part of it.
Any further comments? Staff, any further comments?
I'll just once again thank the board for all their hard work on this and for the great direction that we've received in putting it together.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Trusty Wolf?
Aye.
Trusty Sullivan?
Aye.
Trusty Plunkett?
Aye.
Trusty Dodd?
Aye.
Trusty Kersman?
Aye.
Trusty Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion, motion carries, the ordinance adopting the 2019 fiscal year budget has been approved. Trusty Sullivan, anything else?
All items, all other items were, nine items were covered on consent.
Full night tonight. Administration Committee, Trusty Dodd.
No report.
Municipal Services, Trusty Wolf?
No report.
Public Safety Committee, Trusty Kersman?
No report.
Judiciary Committee, Trusty Plunkett?
All items were covered on consent.
And there are no reports from our special committees. Item seven is new business, there's no additional new business to discuss. Item eight, matters referred to standing committees, there's no actions to take with regards to matters referred to standing committees. I will now return to item two, public comment. During public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which was not on the agenda. So is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item tonight? All right, seeing none. I'll move on to item nine, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned at...
Total info, weather.